Council instructed staff to proceed to sub our attorney Paul Kobel on the existing litigation and sub in attorney Michael Christian.
Okay, can you change to the agenda? I forgot to ask.
No change.
Okay, moment of silence is Debbie. Integrity is choosing your thoughts and actions based on values rather than personal gain. Okay, we have no confirmations. Okay, this is from the floor. Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject on the agenda or not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. However, comments on items on the agenda may be reserved until the item is discussed, and any matter not on the agenda that requires action will be referred to staff for a report and action at a subsequent meeting. Presentations are subject to a five-minute limit. Does anybody have...? Yes.
Hello, City Council. My name is David Knaut. I'm the transportation planner for the Latin Transit Service Agency. And we wanted to announce that we will start officially on Friday to do a reverse service, meaning we'll be able to pick up groceries for people for at-risk population. So we'll use our dial-in system within the city of Susanville, and then our county routes can do three-quarter of a mile, can deviate from their normal route to deliver groceries to... and prescriptions. So basically, people call 252, ride 7433, contact us. It needs to be prepaid, so we only pick up at the grocery stores that offer the service and then deliver it to the house. And the service will be of no charge for the person, for the transportation. That's all. This is questions.
David, which stores are those that are...
So far as I know right now, it's IGA, Walmart, and then Rite Aid and Walgreens for prescriptions. And also, if you need to get a prescription from a doctor, we probably could go pick it up for the person and then get the prescription.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing that there's no one else, we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any member of the public or the city council may request removal of an item from the consent calendar to be considered separately. Does anybody...? Yes.
Yes, but I'd like to consider item 6A separately.
Okay. So we're going to separate it, and we're going to go to 6A. 6A is approving street closure requests for a portion of Sunkist Drive and approving fee waiver requests for the use of Riverside Park for the superhero Fun Run and Walk Event. Council member in the court.
Yeah, thank you. So the question is whether or not we can waive the fees for an event. It seems great, and of course, that's something that I would like to do. I'm just curious, and the fiscal impact, it looks like there's some revenues we will not be getting, and that's mine, but is there an actual cost at all? Is this cost to the police, cost to the public works? And if so, maybe it costs us $100, $200, $300, $400, $500 to help, you know, while we waive the fees for this event? And we state that this is some sort of public partnership?
Not entirely sure I understand your question. So you're asking, I can answer, is there cost for our police and public works? Yes, the time to set up road wires to direct traffic, to shut off streets, there's absolutely costs because we have to pay our people to be out there to do that. And because they work off restricted funds generally, we would be using those funds. They're working on some of their normal operational job descriptions to go out and do those things and not work in other specifically restricted funds. So there's, is there a loss? Yes. Can we do a public partnership? I think we are.
Okay, thank you. So in waiving the fees, I just want to be clear that it's not as simple as we have a fee, somebody's asking us to waive them, there's actual costs. So the city's investing into the community, and I just would like the community to know that the city is investing in the community if these fees are waived. So I think it's a great event, and I would like to see that. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on that, 6A? Okay, we're going to move on and through the entire consent items then. So I'm looking for a motion. Okay, opposed? No she cares. We're now going to go into a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing at 4:23 PM. Public hearing is on the City of Susanville Housing Element Update for 2019 to 2024 of the City of Susanville's General Plan, 1990 to 2010. And the staff member is Kelly.
Thank you, council members. As you know, we've been delinquent on our housing element update for our general plan. And myself and other staff members have been working diligently with the Housing and Community Development Department to come into compliance with the state. So we have officially received, which is in your packets today, HCD's blessing, that our housing element is in compliance. So in the interest of moving through these items quickly, because they are mandated by state law, I would like to waive the reading on my report and just speak to the important notes. So before you today, we have, within the packet, we have the addendum to the environmental impact report that was required as part of our environmental review. This environmental addendum was prepared by Placeworks, which is a planning consulting firm that is on retainer for housing and community development. We were extremely lucky to be able to use them as a key asset in updating the general plan, because typically, this type of project would take me by myself, you know, at least a year. And most jurisdictions use the help of a consultant. So I'd like to commend staff, some of which are not here today and some who are now council members, for their help on this. And with that being said, I will also note that the letter from HCD, Housing Community Development, is also included in your packet. So should the council entertain a motion to approve resolution today, once signed, I'll be forwarding that to HCD for our final certification of our housing element update.
Counsel, any questions? Public, do you have any comments, questions? Okay. The hearing is now closed at 4:26 PM. Then we will take a vote. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to waive. Appreciate it. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go into a public hearing on amending section 17 of the Susanville Municipal Code regarding emergency housing shelters. Let me give you your time, sorry, 4:26. So sorry, could you repeat the vote on that last? I haven't, I'm very... With the motion, second. Lindsey?
Okay.
And Stafford.
Okay. That's a quiet, and this is not in the pen.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. So we opened at 4:26. Okay. Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you. So the next agenda item is directly correlated to the housing element update as well, as well as the follow-up once we get there. The state is requiring us to relax regulations in some of our zoning districts in regards to emergency housing and shelter. And by working with said consultant, like I mentioned with the last report, we chose to designate public facility zoning as our zoning district where the state is requiring us to allow it by right instead of by use permit. So this should streamline the process for those who are seeking to open such amenities for the community. So ordinance number 20-1022 would address that need as required by the state and would... It's also required for us to be in compliance with our housing element. So if it pleases the council members, I'd also like to waive the reading of the report and entertain a motion of approval.
Okay. Does the council have any questions or comments on that? No? How about the public? Okay, seeing none, we are ready to close the hearing at 4:28. And I'm looking for a motion.
We'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number 20-1022. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Opposed? Okay. Moving on to the next one. I'm starting this public hearing at 4:28, and the subject is amending section 17 of the Susanville Municipal Code regarding transitional and supportive housing.
Thank you. So this ordinance, this proposed ordinance amendment is also related to the housing element update and required by the state Housing and Community Development Department. It's similar in regards to, it has to do with housing. Specifically, transitional and supportive housing are currently allowed in certain zoning districts, but with a use permit, just like we mentioned with the public facility zoning that we're updating as well. So the state is requiring us to allow by right transitional and supportive housing in R1, R2, R3, R3A, R4, C1, and C2 zoning districts. By adopting this today, we will have a complete package with all three agenda items related to the housing element, and it will be kind of the cap on the project. So I would also like to entertain waiving the reading of the staff report and entertain a motion for ordinance number 20-2023, or 1023, excuse me.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for the public? Okay. Are there any public comments? Supervisor here.
David Teeter, Latin County Supervisor. I only want to bring up that what I'm hearing here is that these zones are then going to have use by right for the uses that you're talking about.
Correct.
I want the council to recognize that without the use permit, that means that any of these uses, if someone came and said, "I have a transitional housing program," or "shelter" was the last one that we just went through, right? "I have a shelter, I'm going to place it in an R1 district, it's a use by right." And so what that means is that the public is not going to have a use permit hearing or have the right to attempt to stop that from going in. And so I just want that for the record, that everybody understands that when you make something use by right, that means that there's no longer a process where city council is going to be able to stop it necessarily. So it's just something that, because of our meeting in February, I want everybody to be aware that that is a significant change. It may be forced upon us by the state, and it is not the case.
That is exactly the case.
Okay, so, but I just want anybody that's watching this to understand that this council is making a decision, in part, they're being forced into it, but it is not a decision that some of the folks that were here in February to hear from us would necessarily approve of. And it's something that I think you should acknowledge going forward, is that while you're saying yes to this, it's because it is a state mandate. So, and that's for your own protection, because like I say, we know that significant numbers of our citizens might not be happy with this outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I will just add for the council members that it's important to understand the differences between emergency shelters and transitional and supportive housing. In regards to emergency shelters, we chose the public facility zoning because we felt that those areas were applicable for us to take a slow and steady methodical approach to addressing the emergency sheltering situations. We specifically chose public facility zoning because we didn't want to necessarily open the floodgates by allowing it in a C2 zoning district, which is our main street strip. So there was some constructive thought that went into this. Now, in regards to the transitional and supportive housing, those don't meet the definitions of emergency shelter, because that type of housing is for someone who is above the level of needing emergency housing. They've, you know, either out of prison or re-assimilating in society, or, you know, they've come out of rehab and they've now just got a job, and, you know, these are the type of services that they will be utilizing. And by making it easier for someone to make an application for such, it'll help a lot of individuals.
Thank you. Okay, just, let's see. So I'm going to close the hearing then at 4:33 PM and ask the council if they're ready to vote. Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to waive per reading in ordinance 20-1023. Second.
All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelly, for all your...
Okay, we're moving on to item 9A. And that is Deborah Savage, our finance manager.
I welcome stand before you to present. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. What we have before you tonight is the mid-year budget review. And each year, the city adopts a budget in June and sets the appropriations for the coming year. Revenues are based on projections received from county, state. We meet with department heads and city council and establish priorities for the upcoming year. The city again reviews the budget at mid-year and adjusts these projections based on more up-to-date revenue allocations. This mid-year budget reflects current projections for some of our larger revenues, such as property tax and Lufu and sales tax. And these changes are attached to the document in exhibit A. And this has every change that has been made to the budget since it was first adopted in June. So every resolution that was passed that increased expenses or a project is included in the outline. We also did a change to the air pollution control district for the building official who was going to be doing inspections for them, but unfortunately, with his time constraints, he was not able to perform any of the inspections. So we are not going to be charging the air pollution, so that's a reduction in revenues coming in. We also have attached budget policies that were adopted by resolution 19-5621 that we're bringing back to council to change the out-of-area fire policy. We're having it removed from the current budget policy. And this out-of-area fire policy is being stricken to allow the fire department to keep and use any of these surplus revenues to be used to help pay down some of their CalPERS unfunded liability for their department. So if you have any questions, if not, we are asking for a motion to approve resolution 20-5752, adopting the mid-year budget and updating current budget policies.
I'd like to view a hard question. I'm curious as to the methodology that I imagine you and department heads in the city ministerial went through to arrive at this, and ultimately, I would like to know if it is the recommendation to proceed this, but I'm also curious about a lot of these numbers and if we do have some anticipated unrealized revenues that we're looking into or that we're not showing here, and if we're stating that we're approving a budget that's over a million, maybe, and are... Just remember in some of the conversations that, when you've explained this to me, there are revenues that we choose not to realize in our budget, but we also kind of depend on them. And so if you can walk me through the methodology and how you and the department heads in the city ministerial arrived at this recommendation to us, and if you yourself had recommended it, you would think that you might give more time and maybe the more detailed, better present this so that the community can be aware of it.
The revenues that you see outlined in here that are changed at mid-year, those are based on truer numbers that have come from the county. We know what our property tax and Lufu is going to be. It was the projection in June when we first adopted, now we have solid numbers. Sales tax, it's based on looking at prior years to see what we have had coming in. In prior years, we've had more sales tax come in, but unfortunately, those were true-ups. It did not reflect a true amount for sales tax that we should be getting. Our budget was overstated. I honestly do not believe we are going to be getting what we thought we were going to be getting in sales tax. And now with what's happening with the economy, I think it's a very safe bet that our sales tax is going to go way down. As far as meeting with department heads, we don't go over revenues per se with the department heads. We would go over any expenses that they would need to have increases, but because of the way the budget is, all of us are tightening our belts right now. We have unfilled positions that we are going to realize salary savings with, that's going to help reduce some of that planned over-budget that we're adopting.
Okay, and I remember from one of the last budget workshops, we, in order for the city to proceed, they needed to approve the budget because we couldn't move forward without approving the budget. Is that the same, do we have the same sense of urgency with this mid-year? Are we, if we don't approve it, maybe we'll request more detail? Or will that stop the city moving forward, or are we still going to proceed?
It would, you would still be proceeding, but any changes in here where you're reducing expenses wouldn't happen without council adopting it. Revenues can be increased at any time and change. We bring that back to you as a courtesy. It's changing the appropriations or the spending that council has to approve. And as of right now, we are not asking for any expenses to be increased in the general fund.
So this is mostly for information as a courtesy, doesn't require approval? This is just a representation of a glimpse into our budget?
It's a glimpse, but it is a good idea for the city council to adopt it.
So with respect to this, you know, one of our opportunities to build public trust, it seems like our strongest avenue is accounting. And I recognize that to be a city council member doesn't require much of us. We need to be, I think, 18 and live in the city. So we don't have to have a background in finance or accounting, but I would like to see more information as a way to better communicate with the community what's really happening. And the good news is if we don't have to, and it's not going to stop anything, would there be anything that you might recommend that might be able to better share these details with the community?
What would you like to see? Attached to this?
I've got...
Give the representation of where the budget started and all the changes that have been made since then.
Well, I've got some ideas of what I'd like to see, but what I did instead is I just reached out to 12 different people that live in the city, four that are professional accountants and eight that are just people that live here. The feedback that was unanimous was, "It'd be nice to have more detail. I don't understand what's going on, and how do you have enough information to approve something like that?" And so I tend to concur. I recognize though that we are, we have a lot going on with respect to, you probably have a lot on your plate, and to modify and add more detail may better explain the situation. It's going to take time, so we probably don't have that time. But with COVID and with the economy and with the lack of public trust and everything, it does seem like putting our effort into our presentation with our accounting could use a higher level of detail. And you asked what I'd like to see. If I look at these, I would like maybe some explanation. I just looked at a couple, about 10 other cities, local and farther away, their budgets and when they're being presented, and they kind of tell a little bit of a story. This one, I'm curious, the first one, economic development, revenues, expenses, beginning budget is 10. I'd just be kind of curious how that was arrived and why our mid-year budget is negative 3,631, and so on with the public safety on, the police, and also with the park dedication fund and the home fund and a couple others. So I don't have a full story, and it sounds like we don't need to approve this. It's not going to stop progress. But I did actually, you know, continue on my education, and I hopefully read this with ease and say, "All that makes perfect sense to me, and I do understand accounting." So what am I actually suggesting or requesting? Something different that communicates to people differently in a way that can be understood by the majority. And then if we don't need to approve it, don't approve it. Especially, we won't call anything in. It just seems like the benefit of this staff report highlighted an area of opportunity that we can have for our city. And so, yeah.
Counsel member in the court, would you be more comfortable if we tabled it and you had time to read? With Ms. Savage, would that make you more comfortable?
Well...
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. Would you...
Yeah, well, we're asking to approve a budget that's showing a huge deficit. Right off the bat, I don't like that idea.
Right.
Secondly, Debbie's already done a great job presenting that. We're not receiving enough money from the taxes. Basically, we're spending the dollar, but we're only getting 90 cents each year. And we can extrapolate that to whatever extent, and that makes sense. So in order to proceed, this is what the department heads have come to based on their understanding of what is needed to perform their essential duties. And so we recognize that in about three years, we're not going to have anything, as we've talked about that. And, but approving this, I, we don't need to, it's great to have the information. I would like something that better details exactly what it says. I mean, just to read it, I don't know if everybody in this room did read it, but if they did, I'd be curious if everybody did have questions. And being that, when we do talk to people, especially with my position, while I was working as city staff and listening to people talk about different projects and offer their feedback at workshops, one of the general concerns was we have questions about the accounting, and I don't want to have to go to school to try and understand how to read the budget. It'd be better, that form that you have right there in your packet, that was what burst that, was let's look into different ways to communicate with people who right now are maybe not 100% trusting their local government for all sorts of reasons. People maybe just don't like taxes, but also the government. Accounting is the number one topic. When we talk about parks, there was a lack of education with respect to, well, what a restricted fund is or what a restricted fund is not. So with that being said, our communicative efforts, I would like probably staff to create a way to better communicate with the people. And I'm not comfortable adopting this budget. Now, I'm also not sure, based on reading the policy and the CDB, if it requires four out of five, or in this case, three out of four to adopt it. I wasn't certain, except I also worked with the CDB. I mean, with the mid-year budget being adopted.
So, counsel member in the court, your... So, Councilmember in court, here's what I'm going to suggest. You may give direction to staff. You absolutely can. We, as far as if you want a different format, but I would say we should table this until we can communicate better what we really want. Do you agree?
And by what we really want, you mean by what?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you want from the finance manager. I'm not sure exactly what you want to see on paper. And I think maybe you should leave with her. I agree with you on a lot of this, by the way, that if it were simply broken down, it would be easier for us to communicate with the public. I agree. So.
So tabling it and needing to discuss coming up with something, the reason, so yes, I'm for that, but I'm also incredibly cognizant that you have a lot on your plate, not much time. And so something like this requires a lot of time and a lot of effort. And so I think it's deserved that we enable you to put the time necessary in it to prepare a strong communication from our city to the people. So yeah, I'd love to table it, work on it. But that said, I'm going to have to find out what your availability is with Mike, not your schedule, but what, if you're already overworked, and I would just assume table, 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 or figure out what this is in Friday. Not up to me, not up to our city administrators, but I definitely, definitely would like to modify our communication strategy with the community with respect to the budget.
Through the chair, if we could potentially schedule a budget workshop, and we can discuss that through, I think this is probably bigger than that. We can't, we need some specifics if we're looking for changes. But that says, specific guidelines are what we're asking for. So rather than creating a budget thing, we're asking for, I guess we could do just specifics.
And if we could possibly do the budget workshop on how you want it presented for next year's budget and move forward with this. And if it's, if it's a communication that you want to give to the public, then we can do it at the budget workshop for next year's budget. Start from there.
Well, I do want to be able to explain why we're showing a loss in all these different periods.
If you're showing a loss, if you look at, and I'm going to use the example FEMA budget, 1,003, okay? You're showing a loss of $313,000, correct?
I'm not there yet. I'll take your word.
I'll wait to get there.
Okay.
You see it? Because it is a project budget that has already been approved back when we had the FEMA floods. The money has already come in. So the money is sitting there in cash. We are just loading the expense side of it. So it's going to look like a negative because the money, the revenue already came in in a prior year. So this is the remaining budget that has been left for the projects that have not been completed. When you look at economic development, $3,641, that's the cash that's sitting there, that's already been there from previous years. We are just loading the expense side of it because we're going to spend that money on economic development this year. I can't put a revenue on that side because there's no revenue coming in. That would be overstating it, correct? Correct?
If there's no revenue, it wouldn't exist to put a revenue in.
Exactly. So it's going to show a loss. But the cash is already there. We can't load an expense budget if we don't have cash to back it up. Does that make sense?
The general gist of it makes sense, but it just opens up questions. So yeah, I would love the idea to table it. I like the idea of maybe a workshop and having an opportunity, you know, maybe as during the workshop, we can go through each of these items. And in the course of that time, write down the methodology that we arrived to get here, or even just explain that with FEMA budget, we, the money is in the bank account, and either we're moving it from line item to line item so that we can spend it on these projects that our public works is probably working on. But so it doesn't just look like low-level project budgets. I imagine that this is something we've been working on for a couple years just to get up to this point. So I'm somewhat familiar with it. But yeah, I would like a workshop. I think accounting is a huge deal. And I don't even have a sense of urgency. I think COVID, that team should be managed by the city right now. But I think this is an opportunity for all of us to gain public trust and really change our, so yeah, workshop would allow us to maybe arrive at maybe better type of direction.
Okay. Thank you, council. Do you agree to table? Yeah, okay. I have nine innings to table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item D. Resolution number 20-5760, accepting a report for supplemental to the state for projects anticipated to be completed during fiscal year 2019-2020 has allowed for the road repair accountability act. Daniel Kidd, acting Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items here, and they're somewhat related, but they are distinct from the action taken by council. And just as a precursor, maybe reintroduce these subjects. So each year, the state requires that the city report on its intended use and its prior use of any winnings that we receive through SB1. The more formal name for that is the RMRA or Road Recovery Accountability Act. So those are funds that we receive in public works for street maintenance that come through everyone's gas taxes. So last year, council took action on a proposed list of projects. And this first item, Resolution 20-5760, is basically a report on that list of projects we submitted to the state. So one of those items has been completed, and that was a scraping project that council approved last summer. If you recall, we kind of hit the streets last fall before the snow hit, and it was well deserved and much needed. But the other two projects were for a slurry seal and a crack seal project. And so I wanted to report on the status of those given where we're at late. So what happened last fall was we didn't have enough money accrued in those accounts because of those amounts that Debbie receives come on a monthly basis and are not always guaranteed. So we were intending to do these projects last fall, didn't have the money. And so we're hoping to get those completed this fiscal year before June 30. And those two projects are crack sealing, which we do in advance of other work, and slurry seals. So I intend to take, bring the slurry seal project back to council for approval here later this fiscal year. The crack sealing is going to be performed by city staff. Assuming we get a crack sealing issue up here and give the material with the COVID-19, that's been pushed back considerably. I mean, I'd be able to accomplish that. So the intent of this resolution, because I require this to report to the state, to the CTC, is to identify that the council is still in, or still in agreement with the intent of the city to complete that project this fiscal year. So then I'm asking for adoption of Resolution 20-5760, accepting that report that also authorizes us to expand other funds within an existing account and complete those other two projects I mentioned, the crack sealing and the slurry seal.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? Okay, I'm making for motion to approve item D.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to item C, Resolution number 20-5761, adopting the list of street related maintenance, repair and improvement projects for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 per the road repair and accountability act to submit to the state. Yes?
Very similar project. The difference between this Resolution and the prior one is this was for our existing fiscal year. This report is basically declaring our intent to be a resolution to the state for the coming fiscal year of 2021. So this is required each year to go to the state by May 1, which is why this was brought to bear now as a fiscal year of the year. And so Public Works is proposing is a continuation of our road maintenance program, which includes fog sealing. And I've also brought in some other possible projects that we may pursue if funding allows. The market right now for fog seal and slurry seal, which I mentioned in the prior item, it's very unstable. It's getting priced anywhere from $90 per minute to over $1,500. So I really don't know how much money I'm really going to have. So in kind of addressing that instability within the pricing market right now, I anticipate prices actually drop now that with the issues we're going through here statewide. And I'm proposing some other projects for consideration. We're not approving the projects. It would bring us back to council with budgets and with limits of work. But we kind of threw some stuff on there anticipating we may have more funds than we anticipated. Initially, when we had done this program several years ago, we figured fog seal would take a look at our budget for this year, and I doubt that's the case now. So these other proposed projects are doing some concrete here for gutter replacement throughout town. That would require a more in-depth discussion with council because we do have some dislocated places that requires property owners to make repairs to their frontage, you know, when under certain constraints. However, this approach for me would be, the department would be to address surgically certain areas of town where the gutter is inhibiting drainage and thus is damaging the street. Kind of goes back into that mindset of what funding is intended for and why we're here. The second item is, it's basically, it's a resurfacing of our concrete bridge decks. And it's something that the state has been after us for several years. It's an fairly inexpensive and straightforward project. Basically, we've been hit all four bridges in town across the Suez River. And then the third one would be a simple addressing the utility cuts that public works and private contractors have initiated in town on our streets. And again, that would be an attempt to kind of make the street all again and kind of reduce our need for making repairs prematurely and into the future. Item D is an improvement of sperm ring facilities and inadequate flooding. That's a little more in-depth and complex. I really doubt we could get to that, but I threw it on there really just for people to think about. There are parts of town that are partly where they flood every year, no matter how much rain we get. Some of that work can be extensive because it requires taking out old pipe, putting in new pipe, much bigger, and it can be very expensive very quickly. The last, this last item, a little more interesting, and this may involve some Lassen Transportation Commission action. For those of you that are on the commission, there was a discussion, I believe, last year, Mr. Teager, you may want to comment on this. There was some issues identified out in the county where the radar signs in the school areas were not functioning properly. We're having the same problem. And more importantly is the manufacture of those radar signs has informed us that what we have in place can no longer be maintained or repaired. So we do apply a whole new set of those. That's eight of them. It's about, right now, about $35,000. I would like to approach the commission and have them consider maybe funding that of a district.
Yes.
Those signs that are in the county are not the property of the commission any longer and are no longer operated. I'm almost certain that the commission determined that it is not going to pay for them.
Just speaking about the ones in the city.
Well, in the county, the determination was made that the commission would not. And while I won't speak for the full commission at this point, or Caltrans, I believe that neither one of them has the funding for it at this point.
Yeah, I am aware of that. Thank you, Supervisor Teager. I have approached the executive director, and I know this is maybe considered unusual, but the reason I brought it up was because it is somewhat of a regional issue. And I think it seems to me it would be more appropriate for the commission to find out if it had it. So the executive director at the commission will be bringing that back at the next commission meeting for discussion. Simple. So, sorry, a little long-winded there. So basically, I'm asking for consideration for Resolution 20-5761, which is a proposed list of projects for next fiscal year 2021.
Does counsel have any questions, comments? Okay, motion. Thank you for your remarks.
Motion approved, 40-5761.
All in favor? Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Favoring, well, A. And this is direction only regarding homeless discussion. And it is my question.
Thank you. From the January 15 council meeting, staff have directed to keep this as an item on our agendas. And I just wish to keep this open discussion for the public specifically, and be aware that we are keeping the homeless issue on our radar. You can probably, obviously, kind of intervene a little bit, but we have a total of interest would be interested in regards to this issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
All right, that comes on. This is 13K. This is the public report, and it's presented by both Chief Kevin Jones and Chief James Moore.
I'm going to defer to Chief Moore for an update.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, members of the council. The COVID update from the incident management team, Lassen COVID-19, is, we are, we have the team essentially fully staffed now with approximately 70 staff supporting this currently. And if it, as we scale it to ramp up with the COVID, it's our community, the way we're being told or the projected numbers act, that number will probably go to 180 to 200 people supporting this event. Now, it'd be responders or nurses, public and public at large, where we can fit them with the team. The team, incident management team, incident commanders are Longo and Brown. That's Barbara Longo from Health and Human Services and Dean Brown, the sheriff. We've partnered up with, it's a multi-agency team. So it's the sheriff's office, the Lassen Committee College, Lassen County, SPD, Police Department, Fire, Cal Fire, and City Fire. And there are multiple other agencies I did not list in that. The update today has a four o'clock, and we get one update until we have a first positive, which means we don't have a positive test yet. Thirty-seven negative tests, five pendants, for a total of 42 tests. I think it's important to discuss that if you read Facebook enough and you read the concerns of the community, there is a concern that we're not testing people. People aren't getting a test. My aunt didn't get a test. My mom didn't get a test. I didn't get a test. So-and-so didn't test me, so-and-so did. That is occurring. The simple fact is there are tiers in the testing system as provided by state public health agencies. And the hospitals and the health departments are following protocol. There's tier one, tier two, and tier three testing. So essentially, if you show up and you're a healthy, middle-aged human with no, showing signs and symptoms of COVID, all three, the temperature, the cough, or you may have been exposed to a known COVID. But if you have signs and symptoms of all three, a healthcare provider essentially is going to say, we can either rule out influenza one, two, and any other upper respiratory. You have COVID, go home. Call 911 if you can't breathe. So that is in fact testing, that is a waste of a $1,000 test and a time that should be used testing other people. That may be in a different situation. Although it sounds harsh right now, that is the reality. You're healthy enough to go home with COVID. Don't be around anybody. Call when you need us. So that is the case. There are people not being tested. Not in this community have we had any in the case I just used as a example to you. So I don't believe we have people out there that were told to go home and live with their COVID. That is how the methodology works. So there is some truth to those people saying, we're not being tested. You're right, you're home. Either you didn't meet the criteria or you met it fully. Either you didn't meet the criteria, or you met it fully. You need to go home. You're healthy. Go home and live with COVID. And when you recover, you'll be okay. So if that helps understand what we're reading, that's a point we need to get across. And the PIOs are doing their best also. Tier one testing is a level of testing that's a 24 to 48-hour test at a state lab. And that would be the folks in congregate living. So a prisoner, a prison guard, public safety, fire, police, medical, an individual that lives in CBR, the congregate living in the care homes. Those people or a person that is a known contact to a positive COVID case is a tier one. They will test them, and they will get that test back in 24 to 48 hours. Tier two and tier three go to a different lab, or they get shifted over, and then that's a five to seven day test. So there is methodology. There are simply not enough tests. We will not see anytime soon massive community testing. The tests don't exist right now to test 20,000 people in our community. So it's on the, it's on the future lineup, but that's not occurring right now. But the team is aware of what's going on. There is in place facilities to put our public safety individuals who get an exposure, if they cannot go home or do not want to go home, and be around family members. There's a, we have a location where they can go and seclude and be fed and taken care of and be alone. We also have the same for our homeless population and the same for individuals that are non-COVID that need to go self-isolate, that may not be able to go home with the hospital and afford a seven-day wait, sharing it with family and friends. That's already in place. And then the hospital overflow is what we're going to call at night, is going to be at the Lassen College dorm facility. So when the college, when the high school gets an impact or a surge, patients will be shifted off to the college housing facility. I forget, there's a man's name on it, but the dorms, if you will, and they're already set up with, 25 of them are set up with hospital beds. Monday, they'll be ready to take patients and shift back and forth to the hospital from. That's probably some of the high points of what the team's doing and what they've done so far. Any questions?
No, thank you so much. So we're going to move on to item 13B, and that is the community garden update and Heidi.
All the way to the end, Madam Mayor. We've asked Seth Anderson to be present tonight. He's here in the audience. He's seen a part of just a brief presentation council regarding the garden.
Well, that was a super riveting city council meeting, guys. You all were super excited. I'm very honored to be here because the happiest thing on this agenda has now come to speak to you. So three years ago, you guys did an amazing thing with lack of budget and just an amazing handshake. You said, Seth, David, Teeter, and Quincy McCourt, go take this property and let people grow on it. So that first year, we had 10 growers. Second year, we had 32 users. And on that second year, most of you, I guess I should say, my name is Seth Anderson. For all the audience members who don't know, I'm a local agricultural producer. I run Rustic Rancher. I run Market Garden. I also finished school with an ag science degree and sustainability degree. And so that's why I'm lucky enough to come and talk to you tonight. So 2018, we hit the ground running, and those 10 amazing growers grew into 32 users. And then we also built a partnership with Lassen Community College, setting up an adult education grant and facilitating what if something like exactly what we're experiencing now happened, what were we going to do? Do families actually know how to grow? Do families know how to grow in our biome? We have a very unique agricultural region. We have 1.5 million acres dedicated towards ag, yet it's only to two main crops. So how do we strengthen that? How do we go, hey Seth, you're the only local agricultural producer in 2018 at our farmer's market, yet we have 1.5 million acres, and I don't even have an acre. So how do we solve that problem? And that same year, we taught over 100 people how to start facilitating these, growing their own food and canning and such things as that. And whether or not they're users of the garden, they were going and growing on their own sites. And so 2019 came along, I guess we are finishing at 2019. And so that year was amazing. Some other partnerships that you might not know of that came out of that was Lassen Family Services has a chat program where individuals under 18 dealing with behavioral issues, they were able to come during late spring and summer months and go down and grow. And so I facilitated teaching them on macasa. And so that was amazing. Another partnership, Sandra Horst is our manager on site. She runs Grounded Beginnings. She facilitated six beds where families could just go down there with their children and grow and not worry about stepping on such or such flowers. They could just get in the dirt in the garden. And another partnership that we're working on right now is the BFW. And the BSO has bought two people gardens, and now the snow has melted, so within the next week, utilizing the social distancing protocol, we'll be going down there and start facilitating building those beds so that veterans and handicapped individuals in our community have a growing space to learn these skills. Maybe they don't want to invest in a fence, or they don't want to go out and blow this money and then have something happen and they lose it, and then they get frustrated and say they don't have a green thumb or whatever. And two new ones that have come to light is, I recently spoke with Head Start, and Sandra Horst also works at Sierra Cascade Head Start. And so she'll be working on a grant to facilitate a garden based off of what you guys approved almost three years ago, two years ago. They'll each have a garden on site where kids and their family members who attend Sierra Cascade can then grow. That's in the starting phases, but it's still happening. Some other things that came out of 2019 is Witska, the Lassen Women's Sierra Community Agency. Myself, David Teeter, and other users of the garden went down and started speaking with Federal Farm Program and their eco-farm program. And they wanted to know about our program and how we're running it despite having one main entity that runs us. And so I told them, we had to try some weather, we've got the COVID, you guys all know what's going on. And so soon we'll be having them come down to our site, visiting Susanville, and seeing how we can strengthen regional food support. One other one is every Friday during the season this year, I've been going to Diamond View. We had family members interested in the garden, so I've been teaching seventh graders every Friday. So Diamond View has its own community garden. The tribe is looking at their garden as well. And so because of your support two years ago, like all this amazing stuff is happening. And so Heidi spoke to you last week. I wasn't present. And she spoke to you about some of my concerns of, hey, all this great stuff's happening, yet we don't really have an entity or nonprofit over us. And so what are we going to do about this? So you guys all know that, right? And so city council member Quincy McCourt brought up a good point, like you guys already own us in a way. You've already given us the property. Like I will be more than willing to sign a volunteer form and continue to do everything I'm doing and spread this amazing thing with you guys being our entity over us. Any questions? Did you guys get all that? I actually see some smiles now, so that's good. I'm just saying, it's very depressing.
It's not very intimate here while we're all spread out.
I don't know how to act like a real like this. It's really awkward. Are there any other specific questions or, you know, something exciting is we just hit April 1st. I told you none of that amazing stuff is happening. But we already had 10 new family members in the last two days, confirmed plots that they're going to grow on. I'm expecting to completely fill that property. So that's really exciting news, the fact that that was run down over two years ago. The fact that another thing while I'm talking, the fruit trees, so we have 13 mature fruit trees, right? And we have all these fruit trees in Lassen County. A ton of it goes to waste just because we've kind of lost the art of canning. And so Lassen Senior Services has a certified kitchen, and so we'll be teaching, and I'm a board member at the Lassen Senior Services. And so we'll be teaching classes, facilitating classes based off of those 13 mature fruit trees for individuals to learn how to can. And then we get them down to the seniors, so we get our youth and our younger aged families down to the senior services, see all the amazing stuff Penny and her staff's doing. And then that whole community support and what we've shown in the last two weeks of this incident and how amazing of a community we have can really capitalize on these little things that don't really take much investment, you know, scary things like the budget and other scary numbers like that. Like this is a low-cost investment to where we get a lot of hard-working individuals. We have one entity kind of take us under their wing. We just go for it and see what happens. So. Oh, yeah, good. So another thing is, you know, we looked at like, okay, worst-case scenario, the city didn't want to support me this year. Just saying, honestly, you guys would do that, but that's how my brain works. And so myself and a few individuals were like, well, let's figure out how to make this sustain itself if we had to make a nonprofit. So we planted 25 pounds of garlic on site, and I can't tell you the exact poundage of flowers, but also cut flowers to where we could then from spring and early summer have a crop ready to hit our market, our farmer's market, and sell it. And then that revenue stream goes back into the site to strengthen it and start doing updates on the site. So, yeah, we have garlic going. We have flower bulbs coming up, which is amazing. It's going to be right along the river walk and right where come May, we'll be able to have opening day at the baseball park and at Murphy Field. So this is, you know, super amazing stuff that we're doing. You know, come next week, we're still going to be down there on site, and we're going to start really working. We're going to respect all the six feet and all the community scare factors that are going on. But we're going to still be going down there and still providing families with an area to really capitalize on what's going on despite the scare that's happening. It does show a vulnerability of our community. We are a drive-through community to where, you know, back in 2016, I thought when I first started growing that it might be a wildfire that stopped us from being cut off. But now from this pandemic, now we've shown it could be anything. So how do we begin to strengthen some of those local food systems or whatever it may be?
Thank you so much. Do we need to have our staff get that upon agenda so that we can consider being an entity?
So this is a question.
Yeah.
I, well, we will do the exact, what you, the picture D to present that to you.
Okay, thank you so much. You're doing a great job. You really are. I really appreciate everything you've been doing for the council. It's so wonderful.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm glad to bring smiles over your faces.
Are there any more? Are there any more?
Something we briefly touched on last week, but the effort from our staff is beyond with the project, how should I say, the effort necessary to complete the current list of projects that we have goes beyond the capacity of our staff and resources. And I was curious as to how council would feel earlier, if we bring that to an agenda and discuss, so maybe our city administrator could suggest some important responsibilities that maybe we don't need to focus on right now because our staff is really spread within. And maybe we can be involved with that level of prioritization and kind of listen to the recommendation. Our city administrator has straightlined the capacities of our staff so that we can actually maybe focus on the most important projects.
Council, is asking, would be yours?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have an idea, and that is after we do our pleasure of the Legion, so this is municipal code, so I don't know what this is taking, but we go into the thought of the day. I was wondering through the COVID situation and maybe even after, if we could change thought of the day to a different publication, how would we do that? Could we do that?
We can do whatever we'd like to do.
Okay. Would you guys be open to that, changing it if you're the plan?
Somewhere.
Okay. All right, that's what the council would like to do then.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think that's an excellent idea. The Board of Supervisors has done it until I just place the supervisory prior. We just need to make it non-denominational. So, but I think that's a fine idea.
Thank you, Supervisor Teeter. Okay, for the, okay, with that?
No, I just said thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we need to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming. See you on the 15th.